Good evening. Today is September 25, 2025, and the time is--
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Our first report under information this evening is to receive a strategic roadmap dashboard overview report from Dr. Latonya Daniels, Superintendent, and Amina Oftodol, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Welcome. I believe Dr. Daniels will be starting things off.
Good evening, Chair Werbe, everyone. The strategic roadmap dashboard was created to collect quantitative and qualitative data aligned to our strategic directions. This evening, we will share this data to help us understand what we should celebrate and also the opportunities that we have before us in order to attain and actualize our strategic directions. So with that said, I'm going to introduce Amina Oftodol, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and she's going to share this report with you all tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Daniels, Chair Werbe, and members of the board. I appreciate your time this evening, and tonight, we will be sharing that overview of reporting for those metrics of the district strategic dashboard. I'll also be sharing some key data points from the State North Star Accountability System and an update on the implementation of the profile of a learner with curriculum and instruction programming. The district strategic dashboard, as Dr. Daniels shared with us, is a vehicle to share with our community some key indicators of how well we are meeting the broad school board goals for the organization. Each of the four areas has specific measures that will be reported to this body, as indicated with this schedule throughout the year. This reporting will also align with the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness reporting, as well as the achievement and integration reporting. So as you look at the year and the reports over the course of the year, you see where different data points for the strategic roadmap will be shared with you. Usually, they're embedded with other reports, but you will be able to call out those specific indicators. The Minnesota State North Star Accountability System was put into place in alignment with the federal ESEA legislation. In 2025 is the beginning of a three-year identification cycle for the state of Minnesota for improvement with the support of the Minnesota Department of Education. The key purpose is to identify schools for support and publicly report student data. And here are some of the impacts for the North Star Accountability System for District 191. We start with Ed Neil and Sky Oaks, previously identified for targeted support in the last three-year cycle. They did not meet the exit criteria for the specific group of students, those students receiving special education services. And so for this cycle, they shift from targeted support to comprehensive support for the next three years. Both sites have a support staff member assigned to us from the Department of Education to work collaboratively with the building principal and with their leadership staff. Boz Burnsville Alternative High School continues to be identified, along with many other alternative schools, for the comprehensive support focused on their four-year graduation rate. BHS will serve as a partner in the state-provided support, since it serves as a primary feeder of over 30% of the students at Boz, and will then be a partner in that improvement cycle. I just want to call out that in the last cycle, three-year cycle, Boz saw an increase overall of four-year graduation rates from 42% to 58%, still shy of the goal of 67, but making tremendous progress with some very strategic action steps. In addition, academic performance and consistent attendance at Boz, based on their three-year averages, were below the state targets. Also in this cycle, Vista View Elementary has been identified for academic performance based on the past three-year average, along with consistent attendance for the group of students who receive special education services. Our virtual academy sites, both elementary and secondary, now have three years of data able to be averaged and have also been identified. The elementary site has been identified for overall academic performance and secondary for academic performance, English learner progress, and consistent attendance. The Minnesota Department of Education support is provided to the identified sites through a partnership with Minnesota Compass, Continuous Improvement Coach, who will meet and work with the leaders and the staff at each of the sites. They coordinate that support with us at the district office. This is a structural shift from the Regional Centers of Excellent Advocate from the past cycle, and it does align with the statewide move to an MTSS framework. The focus for the first year is assistance in completing a comprehensive needs assessment and applying the MTSS database decision-making protocols. Both of these strategies are things that, as recipients of a four-year grant through the Department of Education for MTSS support, we have built those structures in place and feel as though our sites are well-suited to engage in this work. I just wanted to share with you a few data points from the North Star Accountability. I do want to call out the fact that the reading and math data for North Star are calculated somewhat differently than you would see the data points that were reported in August through the MCA data release. While still using MCA data, these charts reflect a more specific enrollment criteria. However, students who did not complete the test for any reason, even with a formal parental opt-out, are considered, for the purposes of this calculation, as not meeting benchmark. Some of the targets for, in this section, are also based on three-year averages and a comparative ranking of schools across the state. Looking at these graphs for overall achievement in math and reading in the trend, you can see that there has been little movement or change at the district or even at the statewide level. It seems as though we remain consistent in how our systems are serving our students. In this view, and this is a new one I haven't shared with you before, is the data indicator that looks at students who improved their benchmark performance from the prior year or maintained their status as meeting or exceeding benchmark. This gives us an idea of where we're seeing pockets of growth and where students are continuing to make that continuous growth to stay on target. Looking at math, we see about 30% of our students held their meeting benchmark status and saw at least a 12% of those students improved from the prior year's status. That means that if they weren't meeting benchmark, they have now moved into meeting benchmark. In reading, the figures look as though it is 17% of district students demonstrated an improvement in the benchmark status, and 33% last year maintained their meeting benchmark status. After general achievement in reading and math, the next accountability indicator is progress of English learners toward their individual language acquisition goal. So as students who are identified as needing language proficiency growth, they are actually, after their first test, a seven-year goal is created for them, and it is benchmarked for them each year. That goal then adjusts based on how they perform after that each year of the test. This indicator shows us what percentage of students met their individual targeted goal for language acquisition, based on the access test. The average amount of progress for English learners toward their individual goal was flat from the prior year for both district and statewide. The percentage of students who met their individual language growth targets did see a very slight increase district-wide, with little change statewide. Also, just want to call out that, at this point, we are exceeding the state, just a small titch, as we continue to work on our multilingual service and programming. The third accountability measure, and one that has a strong focus statewide, and you've heard about it many times at this board meeting, is consistent attendance, which is defined as attending 90% or more of the time in which the student is enrolled. There was a strong increase district-wide, and statewide remains somewhat the same. This is a lagging indicator showing the prior year. We won't see 2025 until this time next year. While the state accountability reports are valuable to evaluate overall organization growth and progress, it is our own internal measures in the past year that have guided us toward some specific actions within our continuous improvement model. Not only have we made gains in growing in our understanding and implementation of the MTSS framework, multi-tiered systems for student support, but we do want to, I do want to highlight just a few areas of focus for us over these next couple of years. First is the continued implementation of our PK foundational literacy implementation. We continue to support teams with coaching through literacy coaching staff that meets with teams monthly to evaluate their formative data and then make changes to their instructional practice to respond to that. This year, we'll be looking at a focus on observing small group instruction, which should be differentiated for student needs, and should be flexible to respond as students hit formative targets. We'll be working with our administrators on observation protocols so that they are clear about what they're looking at for fidelity and strong instructional practice, and coaching them on how to have those feedback conversations with their staff to improve response. At the middle school, the staff are actively engaged with, under the leadership of their principals, in the implementation of structured flex win time. We have put new structures in place that helps to identify specific student needs, both in reading and math, and have structured interventions that will be delivered to them. The Read Act training and implementation, starting in 2023 to '24 and '24, '25, we continue through '25, '26. This year, we have 52 staff engaged in Read Act training in early childhood and in K-12. Next year, we'll be looking at approximately 75 secondary staff who will be engaged in the Read Act training. And then, in partnership with the multilingual staff, we are looking at a series of very small micropilots, intervention pilots for multilingual students focused on foundational literacy for students who are newcomers or have emerging language skills. At that point, sometimes it's very challenging for them to engage in the Tier One phonics and phonemic awareness, or that level of instruction is significantly below their grade level. And so, using some unique options, we have engaged with at least three sites for some of these small micropilots to identify what materials are going to give us the greatest amount of growth for those students, so that they can then engage back into Tier One instruction. In math, 9 through 12 math curriculum review is occurring with the new math standards, and they will do a math adoption for grades 9 through 12 at the end of spring and implement those in the classroom next year. The middle school flex win time, also looking at math scores, the 6-8 math intervention, we did about a soft pilot, a small, a soft intervention last year with the switching over to the Exact Path online platform from our previous use of Study Island that we adopted during COVID. We found that Study Island no longer was providing us with the standards-aligned rigor and the more targeted intervention that our students were needing for math. And so, now both middle schools in grades 6 through 8 will engage in the diagnostic this fall, which will create an individualized intervention plan for students who might be struggling with math skills, and then it will also create an enrichment plan for students who are at benchmark or at grade level for their skills. So they'll be engaging in that. The minimum amount of time, or the maximum amount of time that they should be engaging in that is about 40 minutes per week, and will be engaged in a research study with the vendor to establish our fidelity and see what the impact is going to be for our student scores. Under language proficiency, I think our multilingual staff have been working very, very hard to put new structures in place, putting in their additional coaching, along with additional teaching staff, and the new structure that is allowing us more flexibility in how we're distributing staff after we have done our initial screening, and making sure that our screening is done much faster and much more efficiently, so that students can be placed as soon as possible into the appropriate instructional levels. The coaches are doing not only classroom observations, but are also coaching staff on some of the new multilingual curriculum that they purchased in the spring of last year, and doing some training and implementation of those things. We also have a very strong project, and I just want to call out Donder Brog, who is our multilingual project manager at the high school for, and the staff at the high school in the ELA department, for the work that they're doing with the integration of high school, multilingual, and ELA programming, really creating a Tier One option for students to no longer be separated because they are multilingual learners, but an integrated approach into the language arts and multilingual. These staff members are working very, very hard to make this a successful and engaging for our multilingual learners and as inclusive as possible for them, allowing them to engage with their English-speaking peers. You also have been very aware, and so I, and I don't pretend to be an expert on this, but I do know that we have our team being led by Dr. Belmont and Amy Pyatrowski and Morgan McDowell on the Attendance Handbook, which is being delivered this year, and creating that consistency for expectations and response across the district. And we continue to implement those attendance strategies that increases awareness, increased family engagement, continuing to work on student incentives for attendance, and then data tracking for early warning systems for early intervention around attendance. And while all of those things are happening, our staff are also engaged with taking the profile of a learner to, from a chart and a discussion and an alignment on a piece of paper into a way for students to begin to engage, actively engage in the profile and for their own personal development. For some of you, I just want to remind you that the profile of a learner is that summary of the aspirations that we're hoping for in collaboration with our community and business partners of what we want to see for our high school graduates. It does express those knowledge and skills that, in the, in various areas, that we want to see students be able to apply as they move into the world of adulthood. The profile of a learner has these as the areas. I know many of you have seen this particular graphic before, knowing that the seven domains that we look at are things that we want all of our students to have some experience and some levels of mastery in each of those areas as they enter into their world of adulthood. So how do we do that? We have worked on identifying the attributes of the profile of a learner in coursework, and then we'll move on to students creating the demonstrations of the profile attributes embedded within their coursework, and then the next stage will be to move outside of coursework into extracurriculars. And then, supporting students through the tools that we have through a student portfolio of their achievements. So that's, that's the direction that we're moving. Last year, we did an alignment with the high school staff of the profile with curriculum and instruction. We asked each staff member to survey all of their, all of the domains and to identify those that were significantly instructed in their course and which ones were also significantly assessed. So in which course were there artifacts or assessments in which students were able to demonstrate with high levels of fidelity that particular attribute from the profile of a learner? We are now in the process of taking all of those artifacts and assessments and mapping them onto, and opportunities for students, so that the students can begin to select which opportunities. So there might be, I'll show you how that works. There might be an assessment or a product that they create in, in a language arts class. Language Arts 9 has an assessment at the end of one of their units. All students participate in that particular assessment, and it has been identified to meeting one of the criteria of the profile of a learner. Students may then choose to select that particular assessment or artifact and add it to their portfolio as their demonstration of that particular area. Other students would say, "That's not really my best work. I'm going to choose a different artifact from some other setting that also meets that criteria for the portfolio." And so, students really do have the agency to select those artifacts that show their greatest strengths, or in some cases, where they're just making it show. But they will be able to map those and will be able to have multiple choices and opportunities for students. There should be no attribute in the profile of a learner that only has one opportunity for students to demonstrate. They should be able to demonstrate that in multiple settings. Currently, we have a platform known as Zello, which is our college and career planning tool. Embedded within Zello is the opportunity for students to create their own portfolios. We have done some portfolio work, and so the next step is to overlap the criteria or the domains of the profile of a learner into that portfolio, so students can begin to add those particular products in there. The portfolio has a tremendous amount of space. Students can create links. They can actually drop in artifacts, PDFs, videos, other types of things that might be ways that they can show their demonstrations. So students have begun collecting those, and we use that as part of our integration with our Avid program as well. And so, the first group that started with this were Avid's elective students last year, and so, working with them to kind of test out what, what kinds of needs students might have as they develop the portfolios, and then we'll begin to expand that out to all students. Students will then include all of the tools that are there in Zello, their interest surveys, their transcripts, their course planning, their post-secondary applications, their, and then we'll move forward to students creating a resume and updating that resume each year. And then artifacts, they can save electronically, and then there'll be a yearly reflection, which would be, "Here are my highlights and here, and here are some areas where I want to continue to work." It's an ungraded portfolio. It is not part of a specific course, and it is embedded with, it will be embedded within the advisory work. And then there will be some components that might be embedded within, for example, the ELA. The resume may become part of the ELA. Some financial things may become part of the, part of the social studies curriculum, and other things might be part of the financial literacy course. So there's places where we've targeted specific things, but again, students will always have that opportunity. The next level is to expand that outside of coursework, so it's easy to pick the artifacts that align with the coursework, but we know our students are incredibly active outside of the classroom as well, and they're incredibly active in their own communities. And so, there is no limitation on the way that they can choose or select artifacts. They may be artifacts for someone who might be an Eagle Scout, might be somebody who is a proficient performer in, in a different area. It doesn't, and all of our students are engaged in volunteer work as well. And so, any of those things could be examples of artifacts that students could add into their portfolios. One of the pieces that we haven't mapped yet, but is our next layer, is mapping through extracurriculars in partnership with Activities Director Kevin Kleiner. So that will be one of the things. People who are participatory in a team sport or in an individual sport, we may recognize them here at the board, or they're recognized by their peers or their teammates, but here's an opportunity for them to create that as a portfolio. At the end, when they graduate, that portfolio can also be transferred into and accessible to their own personal email address, so it continues to be accessible to them once they graduate and lose their ISD 191 email. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any comments or questions? Director Chester?
So with the profile of the learner, is that really more exclusively in the high school and kind of like our career pathways? Are we looking to introduce the idea of the profile of a learner in elementary school and middle, so that they can, like a pathway, start seeing how it's flowing up there?
Right. And so, getting into place the formal portfolio, beginning in ninth grade, however, students beginning in sixth grade have access to Zello, and so they will be already adding some of those college and career planning pieces in there as well. And so, the next piece will be mapping our middle school as well, in the hopes that we'll be able to have students begin working on their portfolios. Then they may want to layer different demonstrations as they become more mature and the artifacts become more sophisticated.
Oh, Director Saxi?
Thank you, Chair Werbe. Thanks for the report. Two questions. One, do we have a rough estimate of what percentage of our students don't have a score for the North Star measurement? Because if they're included, I'm just wondering how far our ceiling drops?
Right. Yes, and I don't know that number off the top of my head, but yes, I can tell you, the numbers are exact, and I can tell you exactly how many students have no participation score in them.
Thanks. I'd be interested in that. Thank you. Second question, seeing we are, as you highlighted, doing slightly better than state average with language programming, is there anything we've found from our programming there that could be taken out and applied to the reading and math side that's working?
I think one of the things that I know, working collaboratively with the other directors, is really focusing on those things that implementation science tells us are some of the strongest and most impactful, and part of that is the coaching model. And so, really looking at having someone, having our administrators and having a coach that just simply is non-evaluative, spending time looking at what those practices are, and then continually giving feedback on how to improve those practices. The other one is looking at data, constantly looking at those formative assessments that we're doing. What are those common assessments, and where can we see those data points? And I think right now, our principals are actively engaged in looking at those collaborative teams and how we can strengthen those structures as well as part of our MTSS framework.
Thank you.
Director Hume?
I, first, I have the same question as Director Saxi around the opt-out numbers, so I would definitely--
Yep.
--appreciate getting those at some point. I think for me, and there's a lot of discouraging information in here, unfortunately, I think what I'm pinning a lot of hope on is improving attendance and the cascading effect that I would hope that would have on a lot of these other things. Yes, because I think, obviously, as we've said many times, if they're not in school, they're not going to be doing the learning, and I think these scores probably reflect some of that. So, guess I don't have a question, but wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Werbe. Question and a comment. With regard to the continuous learning coach assigned to us from MDE, can you, can you elaborate on the amount of time that the person spends with us, how many districts each individual is assigned to? Like, what is the depth and breadth of their support that we receive?
I think it varies. If the, if the school is identified for comprehensive support, then that person is probably, my experience has been that that person is probably onsite at the district or in communication with that principal at least once a week. with that principal at least once a week. It may not always be an onsite meeting, but they, they are in constant communication for the comprehensive support. For targeted support, it looks more like a monthly meeting, meeting with the leadership teams and having some directed targets or activities that, that they'll be working on. On October 1st, MDE will host us as a district to take us through that and to see if that's, that's been the past experience, to see if that continues forward and if those expectations will be the same under this new structure.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. And the comment is, goes back to the profile of a learner. I just find it really refreshing and reassuring that the plan is for the students to actively engage in the development of a portfolio because it's one thing to be exposed to each of the seven realms, but to have that cognitive reflection and, yeah, I'm accomplishing this, you know, or I know I need to grow here. That just, it just seems like a really effective plan, so thank you for that.
Well, we hope that it supports our core value of student agency.
Thank you for your presentation. I just had also a comment, a thought. Along the same lines of the scores as far as like being reflective of attendance, I'm also curious as far as cell phone usage and the changes to policy as far as allowing them in the class and if we might see any changes with some of the new policies we have in place and not having as many distractions and more focus on learning. So I don't know. That's just, I'm curious. Secondly, I know there's a mention in the, like one of the first couple of slides about interventions in the middle school. How do they identify which students they, they help with like, you know, with the intervention?
Sure. So the model of Flex Win that they're using at the middle school means that during that time, all students are engaged in some type of activity, focused academic activity around reading or math. And so we start with our screening data. So that window will close tomorrow and so we'll have that broad picture of where students might fall in the, in the continuum of meeting grade level skills. Then students who don't meet the benchmark at that point, we will do further diagnostics into the specific areas to make sure that whatever interventions that we're doing with them, with the small group interventions are targeted toward the specific skills that they have. And then students who are meeting benchmark will continue to do some expansive work, especially in reading. We would focus on comprehension strategies and some nonfiction reading, some more reading for information kinds of skills. And it also gives those students the opportunity to continue to work in those areas with their teachers on embedded honors work as well. And so it really is, we start with the screening data, we move to diagnostic data and then, then we'll progress monitor students with their response to the intervention to see if we need to move them and whether or not we're being effective. At this point, we're looking at, this is, we'll group and regroup students after the first six weeks and, which is coming up after, based on our screening data. And then again, at the semester break to, with another set of data to kind of check and see where we want to shift. And once students are in groups, they may not stay in those same groups for reading or math because students may have different skills and, and skill needs in those two different areas.
Okay, great. And then my only other question was regarding the profile of the learner. So with this portfolio, how are they able to share that? Like if they want to, you know, share it with, I don't know, do they share it like with a college or what, what's the intended use of the portfolio?
So the portfolio becomes a personal archive for them. The portfolio itself can't be just given for someone else to view, but it becomes that archive for them to be able to pick and choose. So if a student wants to put together a portfolio of their fine arts projects, they have this collection of them within there that they can begin to pull out and use that as a resource to, to send or create some other kind of viewing or publicly shared document. The portfolio is not publicly available, so only students and their teachers can have views into the portfolios.
Okay. So it's like they can, you know, it's like a personal database?
It's a little vault. They can, little storage closet. They can pull things out based on what kinds of information that they want to do and how they want to present themselves.
Okay.
I was thinking of like the storage bin that we used to put our kids' art projects in, but virtual.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to add, as someone who's been using Zello since I was in middle school and, and now increasingly in high school, I think a lot of the assignments that we're tasked in advisory are done half-heartedly because we're not graded. So I think it would be really important to incorporate the student achievement and that profile throughout other class curriculum, ensuring that teachers have time in their regular core classes to actually work on it because it's such an amazing thing. So people shouldn't not do it if they're not thinking about it in advisory, which, yeah.
Yes. And I, I really appreciate that comment because one of the things that we've talked about is how important that collective efficacy, it can't live just in advisory. It does have to be something in which teachers are saying, "Here's an artifact for your portfolio. I know we've all worked really hard on this particular one. Some of you may want to select it and put it in there." So I really appreciate that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we will receive a report about District Facilities' Summer Construction Project from Dave Lake, Director of Operations.
Good evening, Dr. Daniels, School Board members and Chair Worb. Today, I'm excited to share an overview of the 2025 Summer Construction and Improvement Projects across 191. These updates reflect our ongoing commitment to safety, modernization, accessibility and student-centered learning environments. Let's start at Burnsville High School where our activities facilities saw major enhancements. In the main gym, we replaced the bleachers and refinished the gym and activity center floors. We also upgraded the sound system, added infill walls and completed interior painting. The main entries were recarpeted and in the pool area, we replaced the filtration system, updated portions of the pool deck for improved function and safety. Site-wide at Burnsville High School, we made critical infrastructure updates. These included replacing the district freezer, mechanical upgrades to the emergency generator, air handlers and water heaters, exterior repairs and fresh paint on the maintenance warehouse building, new interior wall and floor tiles, classroom and office repainting and replacing media center window screens and film. All of this helps modernize and maintain our largest district facility. At Diamond Head Education Center, we focused on early learning and facility maintenance. We created a brand-new voluntary pre-K classroom, an additional classroom, updated various classroom and offices and made necessary building exterior repairs. We also added security cameras and replaced several rooftop compressors to support building Next, our middle schools. At Eagle Ridge, we upgraded the pool filtration system and installed a new ADA compliant pool lift. The tennis courts were also resurfaced and painted. At Nicollet Middle School, we enhanced the public address system, recarpeted the media center and several classrooms and invested in the music department with new carpeting, casework and the instrument storage solutions that you see in the picture here. Over at Gideon Pond, we focused on creating refreshed and functional learning environments. We installed new carpeting and flooring in all classrooms and updated flooring in the media center and music room. We also updated the main office and staff areas and completed essential mechanical and air handler repairs. District-wide, several important updates took place across multiple sites. We added new playground equipment pieces at three elementary schools. We introduced new cafeterias, or new, excuse me, new cafeteria tables at five elementary sites. ADA automatic door openers were added for accessibility at Eagle Ridge and Burnsville High School. And then we did extensive classroom and interior painting throughout the district. All parking lots in the district were swept, restripped and painted. And we made several sidewalk repairs and major mechanical plumbing, HVAC, boiler and chiller upgrades. These projects, while sometimes unseen, are critical for the daily comfort, safety and efficiency of our school operations. In closing, this summer's construction projects represent a major investment in our students, staff and community. Thank you to our facilities team, contractors and district staff for helping complete these projects on time and on budget. We appreciate your support as we continue to maintain and improve the learning environments across our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any comments or questions? Director Hume?
I'll just say, thank you. I think a lot of these changes, you mentioned towards the end, they're not always super visible, but they are super important and I see that and I appreciate it. Personally, I'm also excited about the new bleachers in the gym. Having been to more than a few basketball games over the last few years, it'll be nice for the fans at the games to have new bleachers to sit on this year. So that's great. Thank you.
That, that one was exciting for us because we, we finished up literally right before Dr. Daniels' welcome back.
That's what I heard.
We were painfully close and it was fun to watch the kids and staff come through like, wait a second, what's going on in here?
I wouldn't have to move it to the football field.
Yeah.
How old were the old bleachers?
The old bleachers went in in 2008. So they're not terribly old, but they were, they were in disrepair. We had a lot of problems with those. So they were, last few years, we knew, okay, the, the end is coming here. So it was a great upgrade.
Great.
Director Alt? Thank you Chair Worb. Yes, I'd like to echo Director Hume's gratitude to you and your team. Summer is never a dull time for you guys and you do such an awesome job at keeping our facilities in, in good shape and safe and comfortable for the students and staff and I really appreciate that. One question. I don't think I remember ever hearing about a playground installation from this, as part of this report. Is this new?
Yes. So it, it wasn't the playground itself, but just individual pieces of equipment.
Yep.
So we had, at two sites, we had some equipment that I would say maybe wasn't age-specific. And so we had some concerns there. So we decided, okay, we're going to go ahead and remove these. And then it was fun, we had, it was Vista View and Edward Neal. And so the, we reached out to both Lyle Bomsta and Angie Poole and said, "Okay, we're going to replace this. Here's the dollar amount, you know, we're in this price range. You pick out what you'd like for your site." So then they got their staff and their students behind it and, and so that was, that was really fun to have them choose. Like, okay, this is what we're, what we're going to do. We're going to pull this out of here. You've got this footprint. You tell us what you want and we'll get it for you. So that was a fun project.
And do you anticipate this becoming a cyclical part of your summer work depending on where the need might be at the elementaries?
We're hoping so. So we, you know, back last year when, when we started, Stacy Sobin and I started meeting with sites with the long-term facility planning. At that time, we also worked with Director Danny in finance to identify possible funding sources. And then we have a dollar amount secured and then we're going to try to build up that budget and then we'll work together with Dr. Daniels and the executive team and our principals to determine, okay, do we want to build this up and try to replace an entire playground? Or do we want to, you know, maybe do fencing one year at a, at a site, couple playground pieces of equipment? But then we want the feedback in particular from our elementary principals. How do you want to do this? Do you want to, should we do it where every four years or five years, we replace a playground? Or, or do we want to, everybody gets a little bit each year? So we're working with them on that, but we're in the early stages, but I, we do already have a dollar amount for year one, which would be this coming year.
Nice. Well, I applaud your creativity because in my experience as a, you know, when my kids were in school, this is a real shift in terms of who's funding the playground pieces. And as a parent who participated in fundraisers, oh my gosh, it's a huge undertaking. And so hearing the partnership from, from you and your team is just, I think it's, it's very thoughtful and, and again, inclusive and it aligns with our goals and it's just really great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I enjoy doing projects like that, like Gideon Pond too, doing the flooring. So I worked with Salma Hussein, principal, and then her staff, and then they got feedback from, from their community. You know, I know how to put in carpet, but you guys tell me what you want. What, what makes, you know, Gideon Pond shine? You know, what, what type of equipment for a playground would you like? You're the expert in that. I, I know how to get it done, but you tell me what you want and we'll, we'll make it happen.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. We truly appreciate your team being able to complete these projects over the summer.
Thanks.
Moving along, we will now hear a report about our Language Access Plan from Isis Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity, and Aaron Tinklinberg, Director of Communications. Welcome to both.
Thank you very much. Thank you Chair Worb, Superintendent Dr. Daniels and members of the board. Yeah, we're presenting the Language Access Plan tonight. This is a document that's required based on new legislation from the 2024 State Legislature. It was implemented then, but school districts aren't, don't have to have it, don't have to have it adopted until sometime during this school year, so that's why we're bringing it forward now. It includes a couple of requirements. Primarily, the goals are to ensure that every governmental entity, including all school districts, have system and tools in place so that students and families can get the information they need and get it in the, in the languages that they need it in. A lot of this that you'll see is not so much from, it's not new things that we're doing, but it's just codified here into the Language Access Plan. There are a couple of requirements that go along with it. One is that we make it publicly available, which we'll do, obviously put it on the website and it'll be part of the student handbook. And then also that the board review and approve it every two years. So assuming this, we make this presentation and that it goes for the board's approval and at the next meeting, we'll see you again in 2027. With that, I'll turn it over to Director Buchanan about sort of the nuts and bolts of the plan.
Yeah. And a lot of the pieces of this plan really are about putting together some of the other pieces we have to just ensure as a district, we're given access to highly qualified language professionals, which we do have staff who need that for clear communication. And a lot of it is pulling together the pieces like Director Tinklinberg said about how translators, interpreters and culture liaisons and how all those roles work together for the, for the sake of ensuring that we have good communication between, you know, our students and their parents, as well as our staff and, you know, the broader community. And so we really are trying to create the plan in a way where we're meeting the needs of the statute, but at the same time, creating a resource that'll be valuable in our district.
With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
I do.
Director Hume?
Just one. So obviously, we have a pretty significant portion of our staff who are able to provide services and support in, say, Spanish or Somali. What about other languages that are maybe less common among our population? How will this plan ensure that they have equitable access regardless of the language that the student and family may speak?
And so right now, we, we already have in place tools that we use. So we have on-demand, either by phone or video, where we can have interpreters and there's multiple services that we use for that. And then we also have in-person agencies that, you know, you can request an interpreter to attend meetings. We really are trying to make sure though, that our cultural liaisons remain in that role of building the bridge between home and school. And so really using those interpreters as the people to just translate the language in an oral conversation, whereas translation is just the written. And so in all those components, right now, we have layered approaches. And I know, working with- And I know, working with Dr. Belmont, I've just let some principals, you know, like as we're talking about conferences and all of these things, but it's really about making sure we have a lot of different ways to meet the needs and that there's not just one direct way that everyone has to use. Like you have to think about the particular meeting or situation you're in and choose the best format possible. Because some technical special ed IEP meetings may be pretty strenuous and so we may work with interpreters who work with our district all the time and who understand some of the language and can help us build that communication with the families more easier than others. And I do know we do have a few interpreters like that, where they're just very well-known and good at doing that role and then sharing that information with, you know, all of our staff. And then we also continue to look for new ways to enhance that. And so one of the companies, ProPO, they added on a 24/7 on-demand translation. And so just trying to add that in as a layer for all of our sites too, so that if they need something translated and it's not like urgent emergency, we have that on-demand other than just the, you know, all of our electronic ways that we can just say, translate it now and, and ensure that it's accurate.
That's great. I appreciate that. I know, I don't remember the number, but I remember being told at one of these meetings that how many dozens of different languages are spoken in the homes of our, of our families in the district. So that's really helpful to understand that a little better. Thank you.
Director Alt.
Thank you. Just one comment. Appreciating that this is coming from the state, but also knowing the thoughtfulness that you and your teams took in, in approaching this. I do appreciate respecting the role that our multilingual staff plays in the classroom and making sure that we allow them to stay true to that, the expectation and the, and the responsibilities that they accepted and not simply add others on simply because they do speak another language. So I thank you for that. One question, in the document itself. Bilingual staff are fluent in multiple languages but are not trained interpreters. Is there a reason why translators isn't included in that statement? As well?
I don't think there's a reason why. Like that could be something that we could edit because bilingual staff are fluent usually in more than one language. And so then being able to work with them, I'm not.
Yeah, the definition could be pulled a little bit from state statute or from other examples where they have those. In my opinion, or my reaction to that is that we want to be real clear about that an interpreter is a specific role separate from translation, so that there is a trained interpreter. That's a specific job function and people are, you know, skilled at that as compared to necessarily translating might not fall under that same skill set. It's, it's a different sort of being able to do that in person and orally rather than just rewrite it. It's similar, obviously, but it, but it is a little different and that's maybe why it was left out.
And I think we sort of talked about that when we defined interpreters versus cultural liaisons and translators. Because typically you have an interpreter when it's a conversation with people, you know, like having dialogue and the translation is just having a information on paper, written and translated into other languages. And so some of our staff do have that skill and ability as well. And so I, I do think that in one of these sections, we talked about how some of our cultural liaisons may translate documents after their regular scheduled job to support, you know, special ed or other projects that are happening.
And I guess the question is, is that part of their role to translate? Or is, are they strictly a bridge?
I think it can be for a, any bilingual staff member. So for instance, a clerical staff member who's sending out a newsletter in one, in English or, and then they're bilingual and could also translate it into Spanish, that could be just a normal part of their job. So it wouldn't be excluded in the same way as being an interpreter is excluded from this definition.
Got it. Thank you.
I know it's complicated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we will hear a report about recommendations for the academic calendar for the 2026-2027 school year from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent. Welcome, Dr. Belmont.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Wurbe, Superintendent Daniels, Member of the Board. Here presenting, I'm, I'm here without my co-facilitator, Ms. Droogie is unable to make it this evening, but I'll do my best in presenting our recommendations for the academic calendar for the 2026-27 school year. Several school districts have spent more time than typical on this calendar and I'll kind of go through why, as well as just one quick recap. I, I know I spent some time in May with this board, reviewing our processes. And then I'll share our design team's recommendations and some of the rationale. So I'm grateful that our school board provides pretty clear and tight parameters and preferences for our school calendar. I think they've, they've been cultivated over a lot of years. And so you can see some of those parameters here. I will probably go through and highlight just changes or kind of key points as it relates to this recommendation. But of course, I'll take questions about any of them. Last spring, since I was here presenting with Ms. Droogie, legislative accept, the legislature did share that for the 2026 and 27, and 2027 and 28 school years, boards could unilaterally change or start school prior to Labor Day, prior to Labor Day without the legislative rationale that's in statute. You can see that we have six non-student days for professional development. Those are days that teachers are working and growing and students are not engaged in school. That's in addition to those 170 student contact days. There's some specificity there. And then we have a minimum of four K-12 family conference days, two in the fall and two in the spring. Our typical approach has been to break that up a little bit and have a four-hour and eight-hour and a four-hour over three days. As you can see, non-student days that are beyond conferences and professional development days. Many of these days are codified in statute. Some of them are local preferences, like the winter break of at least seven days excluding weekends. So I have appreciated, Ms. Droogie gives me feedback in all forms. She's had many assistant superintendents to partner with on calendars over the years. She has shared that she believes that our approach these last several years has been increasingly more collaborative, trying to get different voices around the table. We know that school calendars impact people in different ways and so it's, it's really nice to get as many perspectives as we can, even if we can't make sure that everybody's first choice is the first choice that's, or the final choice. But having them engaged in the process seems to have helped us create better calendars and maybe got, and maybe resulted in better information being shared outside of the team. We met four times to discuss this calendar. We did have like several asynchronous connections, including in the last few weeks around our design team weighing in on sometimes just different aspects or questions we have that have circled back, including when we were here in May and we heard from the board to go back and collect information specifically around how our community is feeling around, around starting before Labor Day or after Labor Day. We did, we made sure we stayed with our design team through that process as well. Ms. Droogie, math teacher is the one that cultivates a lot of different versions for the team. We look at models, we share things, we usually have key trends and things that show up that we have to spend more time on. She's always kind of working through those pieces. So I mentioned in the May board meeting, after looking at two proposed calendar versions, the board requested that the design team collect more input from the community regarding the start date. Sent a fall survey out to families and we received over 650 survey responses from the community. So right around 50% of families chose their preference as starting before Labor Day. Around 40% chose after. And then around 10% said they had no preference. When we went into the comments sections, that gave us some more information, data, some of the, I would say the prevailing themes around people that selected before Labor Day to start before was concern around going so deep into the summer months, until June, I think is, late into the second week of June, I believe it was 12th, maybe 10th. Anyways, double digits into June was the concern. And then for those that recommended staying with after Labor Day, it had a lot to do with that weekend state fair going on, traditional vacations and things like that. After collecting all the information, circling back with the design team, we're recommending that school starts for the 26-27 calendar on August 31st and ends on June 3rd. First two weeks of school are four-day weeks. That's a change. We recreated a calendar in some sense to make sure that, we tried to, our best to accommodate all, all perspectives that I shared, some of those trends. So as we do right now, or we did this year, we started with a, started with a four-day week and then we did a five-day week. We're recommending two four-day weeks. So you can see in the calendar version that you go Monday through Thursday, starting on August 31st, which does lead to an earlier end of the school year. Then you have the Friday prior to Labor Day off and no students or staff, a four-day weekend then leading into another four-day week. We do think that that'll be interesting data for us and especially for our younger learners, how they're getting into the school year. But I think all of us are kind of moving into the school year through different ways and this can allow us to set some really clear structures, but not exhausting. I still, even in the schools today, I'm seeing especially some of our younger learners exhausted by, you know, the school day, just getting into those rhythms. And I think it just affirms people's concerns that, that pretty sizable amount of people that are concerned that they have traditions, they travel on that Labor Day weekend and this would be a, a significant change in our community. You can see a number of other things that have been pretty constant over the last years, remain K-1 assessment days. I will point out that this model has MLK Day being a PD Day that hasn't been the past practice the last four or five years. So that means our staff would be working on MLK Day and students, like per policy, there wouldn't, students wouldn't be in session, same for President's Day. The reason that we had to do that had to do, had to do with that, that day off at the beginning of the year and just the flow of the way this calendar, I don't want to get too into the weeds on it, but it presented, it was problematic beyond just how late it started, just where different things were falling. So I do empathize with our colleagues, our, my colleagues and other districts that have been wrestling with their calendar, including some districts that still haven't, that are like us and that still haven't gone totally forward yet. You can see where the spring break is on this calendar, March 29th through April 2nd. And then where our family conferences lie, the first and the third quarter. So I can, I'll be happy to answer any questions or take feedbacks. Back to you Chair.
Do board members have any questions or comments? Director Anderson.
I apologize because I know you've told us this before, but can you remind me, what is the purpose of the Remote Learning Day?
So I don't, I don't know the exact definition of Remote Learning Day as it's like described in statute and in policy. The statute and policy that's allowing for Remote Learning Days is fairly new since The reason November 5th, or I'm sorry, November 3rd is a Remote Learning Day is it allows us to, to not fall below our membership minutes, have some semblance of instruction for our students, so our teachers can give some type of instruction. And we won't be having, we won't be having our children in the same spaces as our electors, our, our voting that goes on in our schools on that day, which has been deemed unsafe and challenging. The Remote Learning Days that happen on winter, like winter weather also have essentially the same purpose, Director Anderson, to keep some semblance of learning going, knowing that our ideal situations are kids in school with our, with our teachers.
Thank you.
Director Alt.
Thank you Chair Wurbe. Thank you Dr. Belmont. One comment. It will be interesting to learn about attendance during those first two weeks, you know, should this calendar be approved as, as recommended? It'll be interesting to compare attendance during the first two weeks of the past three years, including this, this upcoming one. Is there a difference? Right? I like the fact that the first two weeks are four-day weeks. You know, I know there are other districts that have gone back before Labor Day and it's only been a one or, one or a two-day week. And we've talked a lot about how really, if you're going to have a short week, let's try to keep it only at four because everybody needs to acclimate, particularly going back. And a question about spring break, I know in years past, we had, the recommendation had included considerations for attendance during, for that spring break. And my concern is that where spring break lands this year, or this, for that particular year, are we going to have attendance concerns there as well?
That's a good question Director Alt. We, our team spent a ton of time on March 2027. Could you specify a little more about the attendance piece?
So we know that, that different members of our community observe, you know, have, have different observations and we've noticed that attendance within, within a particular timeframe can have problematic attendance rates.
Yep. So we do, like we have Morgan McDowell with, along with Director Pietrowski, they're kind of our attendance gurus right now. They can give us all the dates, trend data, when those, so, so thank you Director Alt. We looked, we looked deeply at predictability around attendance and trend data in how we choose different dates. The last time the Muslim holiday of Eid fell on a student contact day, our attendance was significantly below our typical day. I want to say by as much as 30 to 40%. I don't remember the exact time, but it was noticeable. The last few years, according, including this year, our spring break has kind of encompassed Eid, which has been very fortunate. In 2027, Eid is likely to occur March 9th or 10th.
Yep.
So the, the design team's trying to accommodate for and anticipate that significant drop in attendance. And so, so we are fortunate to have people who happen to identify as Muslim on our team and are suggesting that, we know spring break maybe can't be that early in March. For a number of different reasons, but they chose that March 10th date.
Okay. Thank you.
So thank you. Yeah, we're always trying to thread the needle on a lot of different pieces. pieces.
Yep, Director Saxi.
Thank you. Just a comment that might be related to kind of a talking point when messaging this, when it would be unveiled. I was originally kind of just hearing about before Labor Day, kind of a skeptic originally, just hearing that, but all the work that's gone into this and every, the details you laid out in here, I think it makes a ton of sense for, for a lot of reasons, but I also sketched out the number of days, so it's just kind of, it sounds like summer would be shorter next year, but it will not be. So last year and this year, going from graduation Friday till Labor Day was 88 days, both last year and this year. This would be 87 days next year for summer, so it's actually kind of a trick of the, a trick of the numbers with Labor Day being on the 7th, that it makes it seem shorter. It will not impact the length of summer break at all.
Thank you, yes, thank you. I liked how you, you named it too, because that has been a key conversation too. It's like whether we're working with summer programming, there will be, there will need to be a lot of considerations that I feel like we've vetted through. We keep kind of describing it as plate tectonics rather than like really decreasing time. Thank you.
All right. Oh, Director Hume.
I agree, I thought that was a great point you made, because I had some of this, probably had some of the same concerns with the August date. I will say, I just checked the attendance numbers at the state fair. The four lowest attended days are what would be our first four days of school, so I don't think many people will say, I was going to take my kid to the state fair on Wednesday. But my actual question is related to the graduation date, which I think was June 4th, and given our conversation at the last meeting and the direction we provided, I assume that would need to be a tentative date until an actual off-site location would be confirmed for the 2027 graduation.
Yes.
In case we find, look for a place and there's no availability on that particular day, for example.
Yes, thank you, Director Hume, that's a good point. Having graduation on a Friday is, so they have like, they have like statute, policy, parameters and preferences, so that is a preference, but we would make sure we brought that to the board if a change was recommended.
That was my only question.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, just want to thank the team for all the work they put into the calendar. I know it's a large undertaking, so appreciate all the work.
Yeah, thank you for naming that, Chair. I'm just standing up here, but there's a whole lot of people that have been helping, so I want to thank them as well.
Thank you. It's now time to receive reports from board members regarding board committees, appointments, and school assignments. Why don't we start off with the Legislative Committee?
Nothing to report, we did not have a meeting.
Policy review.
Sure, thank you. We met last Tuesday, the 16th, and moved forward policies that are coming forward tonight. The next policy committee meeting is Tuesday, October 21st, 5 o'clock here at Diamond Head. Thank you.
Negotiations?
Yes, we've had, I believe, two meetings with the BEA representatives since our last meeting on September the 18th, and then on Tuesday of this week, the 23rd, and we have another meeting on next Tuesday, the 30th, so negotiations are ongoing.
Thank you. Now we will move to the business, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Director, Director Anderson.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I have been working with the Foundation 191 Board, and they unfortunately had to make the tough decision to cancel the Grapes and Grain event that was going to be on October 2nd, due to low ticket sales. And so if you had purchased a ticket, you will be refunded within the next few days, and hopefully this is just a small pause this year, and we'll be able to get it together again soon.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it's generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved to separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Onto new business. Up first on our agenda, we are being asked to certify the proposed tax levy payable in 2026 and schedule the date of the truth in taxation hearing. Presenting the recommendation this evening is Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Chair Wur, Dr. Daniels, members of the board. Each year in September, school districts are required to certify the proposed property tax for the upcoming calendar year, as well as establish a date and time for the truth in taxation hearing. We are required to do that before September 30th and report that to the county auditors as well as the state. Each year, we, when we go through this process, we typically ask that the board certify for the maximum amount. Part of the reason that we do that is because the Minnesota Department of Education is constantly looking at the numbers, making adjustments, recalculations, and submitting those. So if we lock into a certain figure, that may be more or less than what we actually end up proposing and certifying later in, in December. Our truth in taxation date will be on December 11th, 2025, to be held during the regularly scheduled board meeting here at Diamond Head Education Center at 6:30 PM. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education certify the proposed property tax levy for taxes payable in 2026 and authorize the clerk to execute the levy certification forms in the maximum amount, and to also schedule the truth in taxation hearing on December 11th, 2025, to be held during the regularly scheduled board meeting beginning at 6:30 PM.
Is there a motion to certify the proposed tax levy and schedule the date of our truth in taxation hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is to consider approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local Number 284 Custodial Employees. Presenting the recommendation once again will be Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you. We met this summer with SEIU, both for our custodial units as well as our Food and Nutritional Services. Custodians ratified their contract a couple of weeks ago. Food and Nutritional Services ratified theirs yesterday, and will be bringing it to our next board meeting. Both of the contracts do fall within board parameters, looking at a two-year increase of equivalent to about 2 and 2 on the salary schedules. For the custodians, we modified some language around reporting absences, overtime clarification, and also a slight increase in uniform reimbursement. The two-year increase cost will be just over $600,000. The MSBA two-year package is just over 9%, and again, settlement is within board parameters, and I believe we've met maybe three times, so we were able to move through this fairly quickly. So with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2025-2027 Master Agreement with Service Employees International Union Local 284 Custodial Employees.
Is there a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the custodial employees?
So moved.
Moved by Director Saxi.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Up next, we will now consider approval of the academic calendar for the 2026-2027 school year. Presenting this recommendation will be Assistant Superintendent Dr. Belmont.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for having me back. Getting my papers in order here. So just circling back on the report I just gave a few minutes ago, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the academic calendar for the 2026-27 school year, as proposed and outlined in the board materials, the previous agenda item.
Is there a motion to approve the 2026-2027 academic calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Up next, we have a contract up for approval. It is an income contract for Inverhill's Community College. Presenting this recommendation will once again be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Daniels, members of the board. I was here previously, and this contract was shared just after one of the last times I presented, so it's an addition. It's from Inverhill's Community College. My understanding, it's a criminal justice course that we partner with, we share with Simley High School to kind of join our students together. So it's a, this is an annual contract that we should formally approve for post-secondary courses and programs offered in our school. This contract is a little bit unique, as I mentioned, because of, it allows us to share classes with Simley High School and then also share the costs. Therefore, it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the Inverhill's Community College income contracts presented between Simley High School and Brunswick High School and the State of Minnesota, acting through its Board of Trustees of the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities, on behalf of Inverhill's Community College, and authorize the Superintendent of ISD 191 to execute the agreement.
Is there a motion to approve the Inverhill, Inverhill's Community College income contract?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Saxi. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is to approve on a first reading basis changes to Policy 516, student medication and telehealth. Presenting this recommendation will be Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student, Student Support Services. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Director Wur, Dr. Battle, or excuse me, Dr. Daniels, and members of the board. I am here to recommend on a first reading basis, to approve the changes to the Policy 516, student medication and telehealth. The changes to the policy that were reviewed on September 16th were to replace the auto-injector with a different delivery system, so that that is now in our policy, as well as we removed the medical doctor authorization for non-prescription medication, so that our students can take non-prescription medication within the nurse's office. So I just recommend that you approve the Policy 516.
Is there a motion to approve the Policy 516?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we will consider approval on a first reading basis changes to Policies 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, 534, school meals, 707, transportation of public school students, 709, student transportation safety policy, 802, disposition of obsolete equipment and material, and 806, crisis management policy. Presenting these policy recommendations this evening is Executive Director of Administrative Services Stacy Solvine. Welcome back.
Thank you. Quite a mouthful.
Yeah.
On September 16th, at our last policy review committee, the committee did review the MSB legislative updates to the six identified policies. It was approved through the, the policy committee to move forward on a first reading basis to the full board. Therefore, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve on a first reading basis changes to Policies 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, 534, school meals, 707, transportation of public school students, 709, student transportation safety policy, 802, disposition of obsolete equipment and material, and 806, crisis management policy.
Is there a motion to approve changes to Policies 414, 534, 707, 709, 802, and 806?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion?
I just have one, sorry, clarifying question. So in board book and on the website, Policy 806 is labeled emergency operations, but I've heard both of you refer to it just now as crisis management policy. Can we just be clear on the name of the policy?
Crisis management.
Yeah, we have it listed as crisis management.
On the website, it says.
When you click on it, though, it says crisis management, if you click on that link.
Right, but on the website, it's called emergency operations, is why I'm asking.
Okay.
So the website needs to be updated.
That's, for changing the name of the policy, it should be consistent in both places, yes.
I would agree.
That's my only point. And it wasn't marked as a change, so I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. This concludes the regular portion of our business meeting. The final item on our agenda is a closed session, as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D dot O3, to discuss labor negotiation strategy. Is there a motion to close the meeting at this time to discuss labor negotiation strategy?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The time is now 7:56, and we will move to the HR conference room to discuss labor negotiation strategy. We will return to our open meeting immediately following the closed session. However, please note that having no further agenda items after the closed session, we will not be returning to the dais upon completion of the meeting. Thank you, and board members, please make your way to the HR conference room.